Thousands of users report problems accessing Bell Canada and Telus services this, according to a third-party tracker down detector. Good afternoon, this disruption is impacting landline, internet and mobile internet with some customers saying they have experienced a total blackout.
And while some users are starting to report service coming back, the cause of the interruption remains unclear. CTV's Allison Hurst is live with more on the disruption. Allison?
This outage is reportedly impacting thousands of customers across the eastern part of the country. It reportedly started around 9:30 this morning and there's been no indication as to what the cause is yet, but it's impacting more than 130,000 Bell Canada customers and 2,500 users with Telus. This is according to Down Detector, which is a third-party tracker. Now, of those reporting issues with Bell, 61% experienced problems with landline internet, 11% had trouble with mobile internet, and 28% had "a total blackout." Bell Support tweeted, "Some customers in Ontario and Quebec may be experiencing an internet service interruption. We are working to restore service as quickly as possible." And also this morning Durham Regional Police went to social media saying Bell and Telus are currently experiencing a network outage in Durham region that's impacting all cellular telephone devices. Our 911 center is experiencing an increase in call volume. Please don't call 911 to test your phone. And we should also note that Scotiabank also experienced an outage for its customers, but it's unclear if that one has anything to do with the one impacting Bell and Telus. Again, still no identified cause on this, though we have seen people in some parts of the GTA reporting their systems were down, but are now back up. We will keep you updated. Reporting live, I'm Allison Hurst. Back to you.
Thank you, Allison. The city hall now where concerns about the cost of the FIFA World Cup will be before council at its meeting today.
Toronto's facing a funding gap and the mayor is blaming a clawback from Queen's Park. CTV's Natalie Johnson has the latest.
The price tag on the FIFA World Cup has for years threatened to tarnish Toronto's soccer success. And once again, there are questions about just who will pay the tab and how, as a battle brews between the city and the province.
When we're hearing Doug Ford essentially pull back from his commitments and not come through, it really feels like, you know, we're on the field, we're playing soccer, and then one of the members of the team is just sort of walking off and leaving us with the game.
A city staff report confirms that the cost of hosting six games in Toronto remains pegged at $380 million. The plan was for the city to contribute $179 million along with $104 million from the feds and $97 million from the province, including services provided. But city staff say provincial services related to public transit, hospital capacity, policing and more are now substantially higher than budgeted, costing some $40 million, reducing the province's cash contribution to the event and increasing the city's funding gap.
I am not going to increase the budget any more than 178 million that we've put aside. We can't go and find any more cash.
I'm surprised that the mayor is surprised, given she signed the agreement with the province last year. Sounds like maybe the city did not cross the Ts and dot the Is on this one.
The province meanwhile insisting-
We will be there for 97 millions. We were very clear when we said that. We did say as well at the same time, "That's it." And they accepted that at the time.
It's a bonanza for the federal and provincial government, the FIFA games. Total bonanza.
The big bill though will soon come due-
The whole idea was to showcase the city. What are we going to actually be showcasing? Are we just going to embarrass ourselves?
And the city insists it wants the cash.
And that was CTV's Natalie Johnson. Three people were transported to hospital after a commercial fire in the city's east end.
The blaze has been knocked down, but crews remain on scene piecing together just what sparked this fire. CTV's Mike Walker is live in the Pape and Mortimer area with the story. Mike?
Well, Michelle, you can see just how extensive the damage is. The windows behind me appear to be blown out. The deputy fire chief says the three tenants in the second floor apartments, including a senior couple in their 70s and a man in his 40s, are lucky to have escaped the fire. And now the investigation into what sparked it is just getting underway on scene. The Turo alarm fire broke out shortly after 5:00 this morning at the building on Pape near Mortimer. On the main level is a social club. That's where investigators believe the fire started. There are two apartments on the second floor above that. The fire damage is extensive to the main level. Investigators with Toronto Fire and police, including the forensic identification unit which just showed up on scene, are working together to determine exactly where and how this fire started. Officials say it's too early in the investigation to know and at this point are not ruling anything out. Here's more from the deputy fire chief.
When they arrived, they were met with heavy smoke and fire on the first floor. They discovered that three of the tenants that lived in the apartments above had self-rescued and were transported by Toronto paramedic services for minor smoke inhalation. The fire itself was contained to the building of origin. There is some smoke migration through the building, but those buildings should be fine.
The deputy fire chief says the office of the fire marshal has been notified, but at this point will not be investigating. Crews are on scene monitoring for hotspots and are expected to remain on scene for the next 12 to 24 hours. Reporting live, I'm Mike Walker. Back to you.
Thank you, Mike. Now, we take a live look at the city this afternoon, where as you can see the clouds have taken over. It looks as cool as it feels and we're anticipating wet weather moving in. Lindsay Morrison is here with a look at the current conditions. We're into a nice cloudy unsettled stretch.
It is going to be an unsettled couple of days, Michelle, beginning right now. We've got rain just starting to push into the GTA. Here's a big picture look at a low-pressure system that's going to be spinning and sliding across our province for a number of hours, starting now. There's the wet weather just pushing onshore around Lake Ontario. Temperature-wise, yes, it is cool today. It's wet, it's windy and it's cool. Eight degrees at the Toronto Islands, 10 at this hour at Pearson. I mentioned the winds, they are coming out of the east and they're already pretty gusty to about 40 kilometers per hour at this time. We're expecting 50K gusts a little bit later this afternoon. So as you can see, single-digit temperatures right now in Hamilton as well as London. We're forecasting a daytime high in Toronto of 13 degrees, but we're even going to struggle to make it to that. I'll remind you that the normal temperature this time of year is about 20, so we are well below that and tomorrow looks to be even colder. We'll take a look at, a detailed look at your weather forecast coming up. For now, Nathan, I'll send it over to you.
Thank you, Lindsay. The Edmonton Oilers are in Dallas tonight for game one of the Western Conference Finals.
There's a few different players playing in the series, obviously, but in a lot of ways it's very similar, you know, same coach, same system, and same thing for us, you know. We haven't changed much, they haven't changed much. Just going to be about who has the better couple of weeks here.
The Oilers had a week off after eliminating Vegas in five games. The Stars knocked out the Winnipeg Jets on Saturday. The conference final is a rematch from last year when the Oilers beat the Stars in six to reach the Stanley Cup Final. Let's bring in CTV's Scott Hurst. So Scott, the Oilers are the last Canadian team standing in the Stanley Cup playoffs, so does that mean automatically we have to cheer for them?
Well, once again, they are the last Canadian team standing, although it might be a tough pill to swallow for a lot of Canadian hockey fans to throw their full support behind the last Canadian team standing. Let's put it this way, it's hard to think that rabid Leafs fans would want to cheer for the Habs in this situation or specifically for this example, Nathan. Hard to think that people in Calgary who support the Flames really want to see Edmonton hoist the cup. But the number of Canadian hockey fans saying they'll support any of Canada's team in the playoffs is hitting a 10-year high. That's according to a poll from Angus Reid taken before the playoffs. It posed this question. Was, the question was, when your favorite team gets eliminated from the playoffs, do you find yourselves cheering for other Canadian teams because they're Canadian? Let's take you back to 2016. That number was just shy of 60% who said yes, all support Canada's teams to succeed. Last year it was just shy of 65%, so there was about a 5% bump. This year, that number has swelled to 71% who say yes, they do plan to cheer for a Canadian team, even if their favorite Canadian team is out of the playoffs. Not to be fair, the study also broke it down to smaller groups of diehard hockey fans and there are fewer diehard hockey fans who said they'll park their allegiance and go ahead and cheer for Edmonton. So there are a number of Canadians who are looking for the Edmonton Oilers to have success. Of course, there is the Canadian Stanley Cup drought that every year just gets longer and longer. And so there are a lot of Canadians who do want to see Canadian teams succeed, to a very least, end that drought, Nathan.
Yeah, it makes sense. And what about national pride? Is that still being stoked by Trump's tariffs and talk of a 51st state?
You might see that because of course this is Edmonton playing against an American team in the Dallas Stars, so there might be a little national pride. We've seen a swelling of national pride. We saw that in the election and we've seen that in buy-Canadian campaigns, travel-Canadian campaigns. Of course, we specifically saw that in a hockey sense in the four nations face-off earlier this year, but that was Canada versus the U.S. And so Trump tariffs, of course, still fueling some Canadian pride, his talk of threatening our sovereignty. So there might be some Canadians who are cheering for a Canadian team because of that, but there also is the drought, of course. And every year that a Canadian team doesn't win, it just gets further and further away from the last time a Canadian team hoisted the cup in the early 1990s. So to be fair, there are a lot of Canadians that do want to see that happen, but there is a swelling of Canadian pride. So there might be some Canadian fans who are thinking, "I'm cheering for Edmonton just because it is a Canadian team," Nathan.
All right, CTV's Scott Hurst in the CTV National Newsroom. Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan.
G7 finance ministers and central bank governors are gathering in Banff today for a critical summit taking place against the backdrop of a U.S.-initiated global trade war. The summit will likely set the tone for the upcoming G7 leaders' meeting in June. The sessions are being led by Finance Minister Francois Philippe Champagne, who says much of the discussion will surround the tension caused by the tariffs imposed by President Trump. And for more on today's big meeting, which is underway, we're joined from Banff by CTV's Rachel Aiello. Rachel, set the stage for us. There's a lot at stake in these uncertain times.
Good afternoon. Yes, so today, this meeting of the G7 finance ministers, you know, the leaders of Canada and the global economy are here in Banff to get down to business. So among the eight sessions that are going to be led by Canada's Finance Minister Francois Philippe Champagne and Bank of Canada Governor Tiff Macklem are conversations about, you know, big-picture macroeconomic issues, global growth, economic stability. There's also going to be conversations about artificial intelligence and financial crime. And the Finance Minister has said this meeting is really about trying to find areas of collaboration and agreement. Obviously though, the elephant in the room are those U.S. tariffs. We've been having this conversation for months now and U.S. Treasury Secretary Scott Besant is here for these meetings. So while tariffs and Trump's trade action on Canada and all of these other G7 nations isn't officially on the agenda, it is certainly going to be part of the conversation.
Mm-hmm. Canada, the Canada-U.S. relationship right now is quite a bit rocky. Is there a sense that we could make some headway on that, perhaps with tariffs?
So certainly I do think it is going to be the motive of Canada's Finance Minister to try to have a side conversation with his U.S. counterpart here on the sidelines of the summit. His office has yet to confirm whether that will take place, but I do expect that'll be the motive for all of the other finance ministers as well as they try to put their pitches forward to the U.S. But really, whatever we're able to see come out of this Finance Minister summit is setting the groundwork for next month's big G7 leader summit in Caninasca. So it'll be interesting to see what these world leaders are able to come to consensus on, agree to move forward with, and that'll kind of lay the groundwork for how much agreement and collaboration we could see going forward, specifically as well on trying to make the case to the U.S. that one of the big things when it comes to returning to economic stability is getting rid of the uncertainty that tariffs cause. So we'll see if that case is made, if that case is sold effectively, and where that conversation goes from here.
And the Ukraine's Finance Minister is also a guest.
That's right. So although Ukraine isn't part of the G7, Canada took the step of inviting them to take part in this summit. So yesterday, our Finance Minister met with their Finance Minister here ahead of the summit. They had a press briefing talking about what Canada is hoping will come out of the summit in terms of shoring up further support for Ukraine. This is talking about the rebuilding of that economy that's going to need to happen. The IMF estimates that's going to be upwards of $500 billion. So part of the conversation here is trying to see what public or private sector support, investors could come to the table to help Ukraine rebuild. And Canada is really hoping that at the end of this summit tomorrow, there will be a joint show of unity and support for further support for Ukraine in the ongoing war with Russia.
CTV's Rachel Aiello is following the summit. We really appreciate it. Reporting live from beautiful Banff. Thank you.
Thank you.
A new study is shedding light on what could be behind rising rental costs in the city.
Researchers from the University of Waterloo say financial landlords are driving the surge and they increase rents more sharply for those living in predominantly low-income neighborhoods. CTV's Rahim Ladani has more on the research. Rahim?
Nathan, Michelle, good afternoon. You know, when we think of a landlord, we often think of an individual person with an investment property or maybe a mid-sized corporation. But this study says that large corporations have taken over. Think of them as private equity firms, insurance companies or real estate insurance trusts. The study says that these large corporations have now taken over 85 to 90% of all rental suites over the last few years. They bought them up in Toronto only to raise rents very aggressively. They're dubbed financial landlords and the study found that in Toronto, they charge an average 44% premium than neighborhood rents. That's $670 more per month on average. Where I am right now in the Weston neighborhood, the study found rents have increased even further due to its makeup as a low-income neighborhood. Now, I spoke with Martine August this morning. She's a professor of planning at the University of Waterloo and she's also the lead author of this study. She told me that the findings show that this shift in ownership and the use of housing as an investment result in declining affordability and that these companies are saying one thing publicly but acting differently for a financial gain. Take a listen.
These types of companies often say if we could only have, if we could only build more, we would, housing would become more affordable. But we're not actually seeing this happen. We're seeing that when big companies build new rental housing, they charge top of the market prices. And when they acquire existing rental housing, which is mostly what these companies do, they buy up existing apartments. Their business strategy is to raise those rents to the max and to consistently do that in a systematic way. And that is systematically making housing less affordable.
Now, August told me she hopes this study will put pressure on all levels of government to ensure that the proper regulations are in place and also to make sure that these large corporations aren't taking advantage of any financial packages from the governments under the guise of building affordable housing. Reporting live, I'm Rahim Ladani. I'll send it back to you in studio.
Thank you, Rahim. York Regional Police are searching for five suspects wanted for a home invasion in Richmond Hill.
The break-in was captured on security video. CTV's Janice Golding has the details.
You're looking at security video taken overnight Monday in Richmond Hill. You can see four men approach a unit at a townhome complex near Bayview and Ambler Lane. One man partially obscures the surveillance camera while another kicks at the door. He then repositions himself and proceeds to kick the door several times before the lock gives way.
The noise was so loud, like I had earplugs in and it woke me up, like I sat bolt up in bed.
Neighbors say it was around 3:30 a.m. when they heard the commotion.
I just heard tremendous running around, banging. I couldn't hear what was being said, but you could hear people. Like it was, it woke me out of a deep sleep. And then I was really alarmed because it was like, what's going on? Like somebody's being hurt? Like I didn't know.
I woke up by the flash, flashlights. So they actually took a lot of pictures and stuff. I remember it was like middle of the night. I was like, is that lightning or something? Because I saw a lot of flashes. So I just peeked through my window and I saw like there's six police cars, something here.
Police say five suspects came to the home, but one waited in a dark-colored sedan.
Four of them approached the front door. You can see in our video that they kick in the front door and very clearly that one is armed with a hammer. They ended up going in and immediately confronting the people that were inside the residence. One of the suspects was armed with a firearm and they did make demands for money.
Police say the thieves weren't looking for car keys, which is often the case in home invasions. Instead, the suspect specifically asked for cash, which makes investigators believe the home was targeted.
Two years ago, I heard a-
I heard crashing glass?
Still, that does little to L.A. neighbors' concerns, given they say the home was the target of a break-in two years ago.
It's scary and I just wish things could be done about it better because it's not fair, like we're the ones who are affected also by being up, you know, up all night and then being afraid to go back to sleep like last night.
I feel bad, you know, the neighbor get, get bought into the house. It's very bad for, for our neighbor, you know, to live in around this area.
Police believe the suspects in the video are all in their 20s or early 30s, but don't have very good descriptions of the men.
Obviously, when someone's woken up and pulled out of their bed in the middle of the night and has a gun shoved in their face, their first priority is not necessarily to get all of the, any gritty details. This is why it's so important that people come forward with any video.
The York Regional Police Holdup Unit is investigating. Janice Golding, CTV News.
Police in Hamilton have charged a man with drugging and raping a woman and posting the video online.
The alleged suspect is at the center of a W5 investigation into a massive online network of thousands of rapists, a global network the W5's Avery Haynes infiltrated. And we do want to warn you, the details in this story are disturbing.
36-year-old Brian Hayward owns a contracting company in Hamilton. He's charged with sexual assault, assault with a weapon, administering a noxious substance, distribution of intimate images and voyeurism. Charges a direct result of a W5 investigation into an online network of men who secretly drug and rape their wives and girlfriends and then trade or sell the videos online. It's a massive global network that I've spent months infiltrating, learning how they buy drugs and help each other cover their tracks so their victims have no idea what they've done. With a fake profile on a porn site, I became online friends with a man whose profile picture is a Canadian flag. He's uploaded almost a dozen videos of women who appear to be unconscious. In one weekend alone, he posted three separate videos.
In this video, there's a naked woman who's lying on a bed. She looks completely unconscious. And he's pulling out a syringe and is injecting her with something.
In all the videos, his face and the faces of his alleged victims are clearly visible. W5 alerted Hamilton Police, who arrested Brian Hayward on Friday, seizing his electronic devices as well as powerful sedatives and GHB. Only one alleged victim has been identified so far. Hamilton Detective Curtis Patton is leading the investigation.
These victims may not even be aware that they are in fact victims. Anybody who's had any type of interaction with Brian Hayward, whether it's their dating or have, you know, have had some type of contact with Brian is to come forward because any information right now might be useful for the investigation.
Hamilton Police say dating websites may have been used and they note in a media release that Brian Hayward has an amputation to his left hand.
That's W5's Avery Haynes reporting and you can watch her documentary, Sleeping With the Enemy, on Saturday, May 31st at 9:00 p.m., right on CTV.
In the Gaza Strip, hospital officials say Israeli strikes overnight and today killed at least 82 people. In the north, staff and aid groups say two of the region's last functioning hospitals have been encircled by Israeli troops. Both have come under fire this week. A third hospital is out of service. Meanwhile, Palestinians in Gaza are still waiting for the arrival of food despite mounting international and domestic pressure on the Israeli government. It's being urged to allow more aid to reach a population on the brink of famine after an 11-week blockade. Israel says fewer than 100 aid trucks have entered Gaza since Monday, when it agreed to lift the blockade.
At the Vatican, Pope Leo called for aid to reach the Gaza Strip and for an end to what he called "the heartbreaking toll on its people." The pontiff made the plea during his first general audience in St. Peter's Square. He described the situation in the Palestinian enclave as increasingly worrying and painful. The Pope also renewed his appeal to allow the entrance of dignified humanitarian aid to Gaza and urged an end to the hostilities. The Vatican says about 40,000 people attended the audience.
In Australia, thousands of people remain stranded after widespread flooding in New South Wales State. Hundreds have been rescued by police, helicopters and emergency crews using boats. Thousands of residents have been cut off by floodwaters. Others have lost power and businesses have been inundated. One river peaked at nearly six and a half meters. Authorities say a very large amount of rain is falling and has not been moving away.
In Colorado, authorities had to hop to it when a kangaroo caused a stir in a local neighborhood for a second time. On Monday, police in Durango were called after Erwin the Kangaroo escaped and visited his neighbor's backyard. Officers say he has grown significantly since his previous run-in with the law six months ago. Back then, Erwin led officers on a chase along Main Street. He was returned to his owner on both occasions. And just in case you're wondering, having a red kangaroo as a pet in Colorado is perfectly legal. Well, the May-long weekend is in the rearview, but it certainly doesn't feel like the unofficial start of summer.
We're experiencing a stretch of unseasonably chilly weather. CTV's Scott Lightfoot is live at Woodbine Beach with more on how people are coping. Scott?
Nathan, I'm the only person at Woodbine Beach, basically. There's nobody here. You know, if you want a parking spot, there's lots of them. You want a beach spot, there's lots of them. I don't think Erwin the Kangaroo you were just talking about was heading here because no one's coming down here. It is cold, it is windy, it is rainy. Does not feel like summer is around the corner.
Just days after being packed with Victoria Day visitors, on this day, Woodbine Beach is empty. High winds, cold temperatures, beach day only for the dogs, maybe diehard walkers, too.
We're so lucky. This is beautiful. I love this weather.
After sunshine and warm weather last week, the GTA is now entering a stretch of cold temperatures following the May-long weekend not seen in nearly 20 years. The Victoria Day holiday may be considered the unofficial start to summer, but today people were dressed for fall or winter.
I'm back into my, my goose-filled jacket here in the month of May. So yeah, it's pretty crazy. I've got four layers.
I mean, this is almost June.
Yeah.
What's going on?
Global warming. Other way, we're opposite in Canada.
Not everyone seems to mind the cooler temperatures.
It's, uh, it's going to warm up again soon enough, so just take it as it comes.
I don't mind it being a little bit cold, a little bit windy and get out on the beach and enjoy some waves.
Kiteboarder Brendan Schnur was out on the lake this morning, taking advantage of the weather that had most people going anywhere but the beach.
These are the, I guess the conditions we wait for, so yeah, no complaints.
If you're waiting for summer, it's not here yet, but it will be here in one month, less a day. Reporting live at a very cold, wet and windy Woodbine Beach, I'm Scott Lightfoot. Michelle, back to you.
Scott Lightfoot, brave in the elements. Thank you. Let's get over to Lindsay.
Well, as Scott mentioned, it's been nearly 20 years since we've had a stretch at this point in the month of May feeling quite like this. Here's a look at the numbers. So on this day back in 2006, the temperature was about 12.5 degrees. It's going to be similar to that today. And just to put things into perspective, on this day last year, it was 30 degrees in the city of Toronto. No 30-degree weather in this seven-day forecast, but we'll show you when a little bit of a warm-up looks possible after the break. You're watching CTV News at Noon. We'll be right back.
Well, send in the clouds, you know, another day where people are wearing winter coats.
I know, it's tricky, especially tricky for, I find, kids. They just like, their, their heads are in, okay, shorts mode and then suddenly it's like, we need some raincoats today. You probably want a sweater and it's not getting better anytime soon.
It's really not. I was able to get a raincoat on my kids this morning, but the winter coats, they just, they don't want to do it anymore. And I guess I don't blame them. I don't really want to wear a winter coat either, but here we are. It is cool for this time of year. Interestingly enough, it's not all that cool through the overnight hours, it's just the daytime temperatures that we are struggling to get to and we will continue to for the next couple of days here. In fact, tomorrow is looking especially chilly. Weather is brought to you by the Presler Law Firm Injury Lawyers. You don't pay unless they win. And before we talk about the active weather here at home, let's show you again what's been happening stateside. It's been a couple of days now of severe weather with tornadoes. This one captured in Athens, Alabama yesterday. It was across the deep south and the U.S. Midwest that we saw some, once again, severe line of thunderstorms rolling its way across the states. Here's what the current radar looks like. There's some active weather once again near the Gulf of Mexico, right there on the satellite and radar. I'm going to pan things up a little bit to show you what's happening a little closer to home. Let's bring it over to the board here and we'll take a look at what's happening here at home as soon as we can. All right, I'm just going to move along here to southern Ontario and show you the rain that continues to impact southern Ontario. There it is. And this is what it looks like on our radar map. You can see that we've got some low, fast-moving clouds around the GTA and that rain is moving on in. This is a system that's going to be with us for a couple of days here. It is a slow mover and as it rotates, we get rounds of rain and maybe some thunderstorms as well. So here's how that's all going to play out on our forecast radar. We're now in it. Mid-afternoon today, you can expect that rain to be heavy at times. And then into the evening hours, maybe some embedded thunderstorms, just be aware of that. Hamilton over toward Niagara, especially west end of the GTA. Overnight, periods of rain continue, waking up to wet weather. There's your Thursday morning, maybe a few more dry pockets through the day tomorrow, but then look at Friday, we're still experiencing some rain heavy at times. This is finally going to taper off as we make our way into the weekend, and eventually this cloud cover starts to break up as well, and we'll enjoy some sunny periods again on Saturday. But that's not until we pick up anywhere from 30 to 50 millimeters of rain, depending on where you're joining us from in Southern Ontario. Right now, it is 10 degrees, that's where we stand still. We're gonna struggle to make it to our forecast daytime high of even 13 degrees, which that in itself is well below seasonal. 20 is the average temperature at this time of year. Your evening, somewhere around 10, 11 degrees, cloudy skies, periods of rain, and yes, gusty winds out of the east. You'll feel it as you step outside. Overnight tonight, we're holding at about 9 degrees. Again, that's fairly normal. But then tomorrow, we are barely in the double digits for highs. Some communities are gonna remain at maybe eight or nine degrees for the daytime high temperature, and yes, unsettled as well. Here is the seven-day forecast. So when does this all improve? It looks as though we should get into some sun into the day on Saturday. Cloud and sun mix, mostly sunny at this point on Sunday, and that day's looking pretty nice. 18 for the high. Monday, yep, hopefully that sun is sticking around, but we see a downward trend again temperature-wise. And at 18 degrees, our warmest day over the next seven, that is still cooler than normal. Again, we should be reaching highs of about 20, 21 degrees. And I'll remind you that tomorrow's forecast high is only about 10. That's the weather for now. Michelle, over to you.
Appreciate the heads up. Thank you, Lindsay. Well, and out of this world, warning from NASA to tell you about extreme space weather could cause widespread disruption here on Earth. CTV's John Vennavalli-Rao explains.
While you couldn't see it by looking at the sun with your own eyes, shooting out from the surface last week, flares that got a lot of attention erupting 150 million kilometers from Earth, the most powerful we've seen so far this year.
We're still in the solar maximum era, so these sorts of things potentially can cause problems.
The flares designated as X-class, which is the strongest, sent out a burst of energy and radiation that led to shortwave radio blackouts on five continents. And NASA continuing to watch the sunspot where they came from, called AR-4087.
The fact that it is big has the potential to launch a lot of stuff towards us. Whether it will or not, and will it be aimed towards the Earth, we just don't know.
Solar flares can be accompanied by ejections that can hit the Earth and not only mess with communications, but disrupt satellite operations and even cause power outages.
Snow don't lies.
They can also light up the night sky and lead to the northern lights being seen much further south than usual, which happened spectacularly a year ago. The sun is currently at its solar maximum, the peak of an 11-year solar cycle, that sees it go from being quiet to very active.
We right now are in a solar maximum. That's why we're getting such great northern lights over the last few months, few years. And that will start to wane, and then we'll have to wait 11 years for it to happen again.
Yesterday, it fired a warning shot at us.
Social media's been all abuzz about the solar activity, which we could see more of this year, though no more interruptions here on Earth are forecast, at least for the next few days. John Vennavalli-Rao, CTV News.
For many Ontario high school students, springtime also means prom season.
But for kids with disabilities, there can be many special considerations. CTV's health reporter Pauline Chan has the details.
Like if you've ever seen a good early 2000s movie, there's a prom scene in there somewhere. It's one of those things you dream about for ages.
And 16-year-old Jillian Peters is no different. The grade 11 student at Leicester B Pearson Collegiate is attending her first prom with a friend, and finding the right dress was a priority.
Like poofy skirts and wheelchairs, that's not gonna work because it's gonna catch on the tires, so you have to make sure it's going to lay right when you are sitting down the entire time.
Not that the wheelchair is going to hold her back from the dance floor.
Just because maybe dancing looks a little different, or you might not be great at it, doesn't mean you can't enjoy it. Like, I don't dance well, but I dance happily.
Jillian has spastic dyplegous cerebral palsy and pretty much grew up at Hall and Blorview. And while her particular needs may seem visible, for many kids, they aren't. For example, the friend she's going with is autistic.
Is it going to be loud? How bright are your lights? The textures of the food, which is bothersome for us both because I have my own sensory issues with that.
You may also want to provide something like a sensory space, a quiet space that people can go to and take a break if needed. Robin Sanford says schools and student bodies have become increasingly open to such accommodations, but to help, Hall and Blorview has set up Project Inclusion. That is a resource tool for educators to help them figure out how to make a classroom accessible, but also to provide inclusive field trips, clubs, extracurricular activities for all the students at the schools. It's something Jillian promotes whenever she can, but for now, she's focusing on prom night and all that entails for a young person enjoying all of life's milestones. Pauline Chan, CTV News.
More than 55,000 Canada Post workers are scheduled to go on strike this Friday, but there's a glimmer of hope that it won't happen. The Crown Corporation will make a new offer today. A spokesperson says there will be a meeting with the union. And a union negotiator has told CTV News yesterday would delay the strike notice by two weeks if there was a new offer. In the event of a national labor disruption, mail and parcel delivery will stop across Canada. New items will not be accepted until the strike ends, and those that haven't been delivered yet will be held back. If there are smaller rotating strikes, mail and parcel deliveries will only be interrupted in affected areas. But customers nationwide may still experience delays. Social assistance checks will continue to be delivered even if there is a national strike.
A new photo exhibition by two local artists takes us on a journey through the intersection of fashion, identity, and those who live with disabilities. This bold showcase taking place at the Clark Center for the Arts in Scarborough, and that's where we find our Jessica Smith this hour. Jess, tell us more.
The photos really are breathtaking, Michelle. And this kind of was a project that really is the collaboration of two fantastic artists over a span of about eight years, Anahita here and Riley. But we're gonna start with you, Anahita, because this is really such a striking exhibit. It's three floors here. We're on the first floor. The shoes, the different scenes, it's that intersection, like we were mentioning, of fashion, ability, and access. Talk to me about what this story is all about.
Step Into My Shoes is about shifting perspectives, inviting people to look beyond assumptions made about people like myself with physical disability or in wheelchairs. My experiences in, as a member of society, is that there's always been some invisible or visible barriers placed upon me, and it's important that people see that I live my life to the fullest. It just looks a little bit different.
And the shoes really are a highlight in so many of these photos. And you have high heels, you have really cool embroidered kind of combat boots. Why was that important to feature that part of your life?
It's really part of my identity. I love fashion. I love to dress up. It's a part of who I am and being bold, and I do get attention and stares, so I also like to give people something, you know, nice, a little spicy to look at.
And Riley, this project was a labor of love over the span of eight years. How did this all come to fruition? Because I know for the two of you, this has been a friendship that's been, you said, about 15 years.
Yeah, Anahita and I met over 15 years ago for a French language course that we took. You know, she was interested in fashion and I, as well as a fashion photographer, so we kind of connected that way. And then when she approached me to bring her vision to life, I, you know, I was fully in support. I think it's such a great message, something really important for the fashion industry to, to just be open and aware of, yeah.
And Anahita, I know you have a love of shoes. And there's a photo we will show in our story later this evening. I gotta show off your shoes right here. Talk about the shoes, about the intersection between beauty, accessibility, and just how you make your way through the world.
Yeah, you know, it's, I get comments, and one comment, and it's featured in one of the images, is, oh, it's such a shame, you're so beautiful. And that reveals a perception that beauty and disability can't coexist, and that's not true. And this is why this year is so important to confront those perceptions and allow people, others like myself, not to live under those perceptions in silence.
You're doing incredible work. We'll have more on this tonight at 5:00 and 6:00. I'm gonna throw to break, we'll have more news and weather after the break.
Get Toronto's top stories, breaking news alerts, and watch live. Download the CTV News app.
Earlier this month, we had a story about a business that was scammed out of more than $100,000 by a fake bank draft.
After our story, other businesses have come forward to say they've also been ripped off the very same way. CTV's Pat Foran has this consumer alert.
They gave me the consumer confidence that it was real.
Todd Munyon of Sutton West runs a spray foam insulation business and recently had to sell a spray foam trailer. He put it on Kijiji, and a buyer told him he would pay with a bank draft. Munyon says he checked with his bank before accepting payments.
They told me to get a certified money order or a bank draft, which I did, and the receipt with it, where it came from the bank.
A buyer gave Munyon a Scotiabank bank draft of almost $156,000, left with the trailer, and at first, everything seemed fine. Munyon took the bank draft to his bank, where he says the teller thought it was real. She deposited the bank draft of almost $156,000, but four days later, the bank said it was a fake and reversed the funds.
I brought it to the bank, had them look at it, they said it was real. They put it in, four days later, it's gone.
Munyon contacted CTV News after seeing our story with Patrick Benet. He runs an excavation business and was selling a skid steer for just over $108,000. He was also scammed with a fake Scotiabank bank draft.
A hundred percent fake. So of course, I'm in shock.
In Benet's case, his insurance company agreed he was the victim of theft and decided to cover the $108,000 loss. But Munyon says both his bank and insurance company are refusing to cover his loss. The investigation is now in the hands of the police.
And now we're in a, quite a bind because the bank doesn't want to help us, the insurance company has denied us.
Criminals are using new technology to create fake documents that look like the real thing. Munyon says without help, his company could go under.
I'd worked at this business for 30 years, and it could disappear tomorrow, and I could have, you know, 20 guys unemployed.
Pat Foran, CTV News.
The Toronto Blue Jays will go for the series win when they host the San Diego Padres at Rogers Centre tonight.
Tough thing to go through. Line hard to right field, gone!
Toronto only had three hits last night, but it was enough to beat the Padres 3-0, and that's because two of the hits were home runs. The Jays send Kevin Gosman to the mound tonight. San Diego counters with Randy Vasquez. The Padres have lost four in a row.
To the ice, and Canada has finished atop its group at the Men's World Hockey Championship.
And McKinnon feeds it down to Connecty, works it back and forth, score!
Canada beat co-host Sweden 5-3 yesterday. Nathan McKinnon led the way with a goal and two assists. It was a bounce-back game after Canada and Finland, lost to Finland 2-1 on Monday. Canada had six regulation wins and an extra-time loss in the preliminary round. Canada squares off against co-host Denmark tomorrow in the quarterfinals.
Coming up, a doggy daycare on wheels, a Kitchener Waterloo business that picks up pups and takes them on a full day of adventure. Details after the break.
A new Kitchener Waterloo business is making caring for your pup more mobile.
Paw Trips picks dogs up from their homes in a decked-out pup shuttle, and that's when the dog day begins. CTV's Spencer Turcot rode along.
From the second the hot pink pup shuttle turns onto the street and the doors open, Barley and Chloe make a beeline to the bus.
When I find out that there is a local bus and it's pink, I knew my two gold retrievers had to be on the bus.
Their tails wag whenever they get to spend their day with Paw Trips, a mobile doggy daycare. Nicole Belzky is the top dog behind the operation.
I pick up your pup in the morning, we go for a two-hour trail walk, then we head to the Dogrink, which is an indoor facility. We do jumping, playtime, scent training, different activities, and we can gear it to different types of dog breeds as well.
Before they're dropped off in the afternoon, they're treated to a pup cup dessert.
It's just a nice little treat before they go home.
That's if you can get them to go home, with many pups falling in love with the experience, even the nervous ones.
Miss Chloe is a COVID dog. She is very nervous and full of anxiety. That's the big reason why we signed her up for this bus service, and we always make sure that Miss Chloe has her backpack on for the bus, and she's got her special support stuffed animals for her and her brother, and it makes her happy and loves to, loves to see us.
There is a meet and greet with Paw Trips staff before being introduced to other dogs to ensure safety, which is also a top priority while riding on the bus.
Everyone wears a harness. We do GPS trackers on each pup. You never, you know, want to miss a beat that anything could happen, you're always prepared.
And while owners may miss their pups for the few hours that they're gone, it can be worth it, knowing they can get some work done in the meantime and in the hours that follow, with the canine's dog tired by the time they get home. Spencer Turcot, CTV News, Kitchener.
What a great service. I love how the dogs ran to the bus, like the people was going on.
That is next level. When I was a kid, my dog was just stuck inside all day. It's incredible, wow. Probably not the best dog-walking weather, but most dogs don't mind.
Yeah, you'll probably find a few puddles on the trails today. Here's one more look at the satellite and radar. The rain is moving into the GTA. This is all just getting started, so be aware that we are in for a soggy afternoon. And overnight tonight, tomorrow, is going to be chilly. Nathan and Michelle, we'll talk more about the forecast tonight at 6:00.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. And that is CTV News at Noon. Remember, you can get Toronto's breaking news all day long on CP24 and at ctvenewstoronto.cn.
For Lindsay Morrison and the whole team here, have a pleasant afternoon. I'm Michelle Dude.
And I'm Ethan Dowder. Be sure to join us later for CTV News at 5:00 and 6:00.